Welcome everyone. To breathe into the new year. With Sid Rhodes, y'all, and we will just get started shortly. So go ahead and get comfy, find a little comfy spot in your home or wherever you're coming in live for this amazing workshop. And again, we will begin shortly. Okay, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. All right. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, Work at Community. Welcome to everyone joining us on Zoom and everyone streaming live on YouTube. This is a Work at Health special event called Breathe Into the New Year with Sid Rhodes. My name is Max Becker and I am your community manager here at Work at Health. Our chat is open and live on both Zoom and YouTube, so please say hello in the chat. Tell us where you're coming in from. Tell us if you're new to breath work. Because y'all, I am so delighted to introduce to you Breathwork Facilitator Sid Rhodes. Sid is a daughter of the Colorado Rocky Mountains, living across the globe near the ocean in the inner north city of Narm, Melbourne. Yes, that is Australia. Sid also is coming to us from the future as it is Friday morning in Australia. Her breathwork practice is her anchor and continuous liberator. Sid identifies as someone in recovery from the abuse of many emotionally nubbing substances, as well as people pleasing and perfectionism. Got that in common. She invites us to find peace among the chaos using our very own breath. You can follow Sid at TheBreathness on Instagram, and I will put her website and her details in the chat for you. And before we begin, on a personal note, Sid and I's presence with you tonight is also an example of the wonder of community, of recovery community. I met Sid five years ago and we started our recovery journey together. And here we are. And so Sid, so excited for you to join us tonight. Take it away.
Hello, everyone. Max, thank you so much. Yeah, as you were talking there about, yeah, meeting five years ago, that's, it's wild. And we have been through a lot together and thank you for all that you have done and held for me in my own recovery journey. And thank you for everything that you're doing for the Work at people as well. And thank you for having me. So I'll kick off by saying happy, happy new year, everyone. I know that that can be maybe a conflicting feeling that comes up around New Years, but nevertheless, we're headed into 2023. And yeah, I feel really honored to be here talking about something that's been so useful for me in my recovery journey and continues to be one of my primary things that I use in my life toolkit. And before I get any further, I do want to take a moment just to, it's customary in Australian culture to always pay tribute to the caretakers and the wisdom keepers that were on this land far before any of us were. So just want to take a minute to honor the Wurundjeri people of the Gulu nation. And just say that I live my life trying to live with intention aligned with their wisdom and values and taking care of land and water and community. So with that, I, yeah, I just want to kind of kick off and talk a little bit about like who I am and why I'm here talking to you today about breath work. And then we'll talk about what breath work is because I have a lot of people that come to me and they're like, are you going to tell me how to breathe? Like I'm already breathing. I can't, I don't understand what this thing is. So we're going to talk about breath work, why it's kind of trending, what it is. And we're going to talk about a few different techniques and then we're going to have the opportunity to do it all together. And then we'll do a little closing and have some time for Q and A. But if you have any questions in the meantime, like Max said, the chat's open, so chat away, please. This is a like, you know, community event, so feel free to get connected. And yeah, I'll answer questions there at the end. So. Um, yeah, as Matt said, my name is Sid, Sydney, but I go by Sid and I come from Colorado, born and raised, and now live in Australia, which even when I say that, having been here three years, I'm like blown away. And that never would have been possible had I not made the decision to try and in my relationship with substances that were keeping me really, really, really sick. So for really grateful for that. So I live in Australia, I live in the inner north in Melbourne with my two kids, my third child from my partner is back in the States and yeah, I have been sober for five years last November, primarily from alcohol. But I also engaged with several other substances that were making me quite, quite sick. And I was in a very heavy cycle of abuse. And yeah, there is a much longer and detailed story there. And maybe I'll just save that for another time. But I do want to talk about how breath work intersects with my recovery journey and how that might be applicable for anybody here listening. And there are three main parts where breath work kind of intersects with my recovery journey. And the one that I want to bring up is the one where I was deep in kind of that point of knowing that I needed to get sober, but I couldn't quite face it, that cognitive dissonance that's talked about recovery communities a whole lot. So I was really, really deep in the cycle and I was at work one day, I was working retail and I was just on the floor stocking shelves. I had a brand new baby. I had just had my second daughter. And I was, had just come off the back of caring for my father who passed away from illnesses due to a lifetime of substance abuse. So there were all of these things kind of unfolding for me and I found myself working and I remember it so clearly, but there was this moment where I just felt like I was gas. I literally was gasping for breath, like I couldn't breathe. And I had had panic attacks in the past and this was not one of those. It was just a point in time where I felt like I was suffocating and like nothing was combined with it. And that kind of started my curiosity around breathing and how it's affecting my system and my brain and my health and all of it. And that was back in 2014. And so now I know that what was happening in that moment was that I just was so anxious because I was so hungover. And I was just breathing so shallow. Right? Just breathing from like the top part of my chest, the upper part of my lungs. That it, my body needed breath and so I actually gasp for breath. So I was just so anxious and so tight in my body that I literally had like come up from like being underwater looking for air. So it's been a big journey since then. And I think from there, I'll kind of start talking about what breath work is. Like it's just kind of this term that's used in a lot of different spaces. You know, it's TikTok and Instagram and it can be incorporated in yoga and there's, it's a huge part of yoga, but my point being is that you can see breath work kind of all around and you're like, what, you know, what does that translate to? What does that mean? So breath work is a huge umbrella term, meaning that it's working with the breath. So the breath is part of our autonomic nervous system. And so it's automatic, right? We breathe without having to think about it. But it is this mechanism and the only mechanism within the body that if we actually like think about it, instantaneously, we can manipulate it, we can move it and we can use it, we can work with our breath to enhance and help our mental state, our physical state, and all different kinds of things. So breath work simply means doing work with the breath to get from one place to the other. Or simply, you know, being aware and working with the breath. So I, as a breath worker, use breath in multiple different ways and facets, anywhere from tiny little techniques that can help you in the moment up to like half day, full day seminars where we do really specific techniques where we're lying on the ground and we're kind of really getting into somatics, so working with the body and releasing trauma and even doing like ecstatic dance and all of this kind of stuff. So just know that it's this huge umbrella and range. And I'm so excited because today we're just going to be basically talking about being aware of the breath. And then I'm going to share a technique that I think will be, it was super useful to me. It's been useful to others that I know. And I'm hoping that it can be useful for you to take away with you today. Um, so just talking about breath awareness to begin. When I talk about work, breath work, breath work. So sorry, breath awareness is simply the practice of being aware of your breath. So it's not doing that working part of the breath. It is just being still enough that you can pay attention to the breath. And I think if one were to start a breath work practice, that's really where it begins. I think a lot of us don't pay attention to our breath. I witnessed, I know from personal experience that we don't pay attention to our breath. And so much starts with the breath and I can share that because that day when I was so anxious and breathing from the top part of my chest, that it was why I was starving myself of oxygen. I was starving myself of breath and my body was so anxious and nervous. And once I started to be aware of how I was breathing and not even doing any particular type of techniques, but just simply like taking one deep breath a day and being aware of my breath and how I was breathing. I started to just have a better connection with my body. I started to be more aware of this anxiety that I was feeling. And so I think that a really good place to start is right there. If there's any kind of morning routine that you have, maybe just paying attention to how you're breathing. And if you want to move on from there, just doing like five breaths. Doesn't need to be anything complicated or strategic or necessarily a technique. But just taking five breaths, being connected to the breath and seeing how you kind of feel afterwards. And it might sound really simple and it might sound really like elementary, but if you do it and you sit there and you're sitting in the stillness and you're starting to kind of listen to the body and you're listening to kind of the stuff that's happening all around you. It can be actually quite challenging for some people. So that's an invitation there. And then when we move on from breath awareness and maybe just taking like those, you know, five to 10 breaths. The way that we can use breath work really falls into kind of two categories. It's working with the nervous system. So it's using activating type breath work techniques to bring on our sympathetic nervous system, which for me means like when I'm depressed and feeling lethargic and not kind of feeling motivated to do anything, I'm able to access these breath techniques. The activating breath techniques to get me from point A to point B. It wakes up my system, it brings my mind back online, it makes me feel like a human again. And I'm able to create a bridge for me to go from not being able to do much to doing a lot. The other side of it is you activating the parasympathetic nervous system means when we're going, when we're super anxious, like that day when I was working to calming down. So those of us that have stress and anxiety, and I have both and I use both. So when I'm feeling like before this call, before going live here with Max and you all, like using breath techniques to calm down, to stop shaking, to stop sweating and maybe not stop, but just to ground more into my body to make me feel a bit more centered and present. So the bulk of the breath work techniques kind of revolve around those two categories. And that's the way that I kind of like to frame it when I think about it and I work with clients is that we can calm ourselves down or we can give ourselves energy. And the other day when I was talking to Max and also about how breath work related to me in recovery, the thing that really came to mind for me was that the, the way, the reason why I love breath work so much is because I remember being at a point where I was like, okay, cool. Like I know I need to meditate or I know that I, you know, exercise help, you know, brings in endorphins and therefore you feel better. Like there were all of these things out there that I could do to be healthier, to, you know, be in recovery, to not fall into the old cycles and the old behaviors, old patterns, old habits, right? Like we need to be doing these things instead of these things. You know, to help our depression, to help our anxiety, to support our mental health. And I remember just sitting there like, oh, that's so great, but like, how the hell do I do that? Like, great. I love that there's like this whole world of these things out there that I need to be doing, but I legit cannot do them. Like, how do I get from here to there? How do I pick up my kid this evening? How do I like get to the grocery store? How do I do the simplest of things? How do I do the thing that you're telling me to do in recovery? And for me, breath work was that link or bridge, I like to call it. So when I was able to get aware of my breath and connect to my breath, because it's not something that I need to like turn on. It's not something I need to go pick up. It's not something I need to prepare myself for. I don't have to like prepare to do anything. It's literally right there. It's built in. It is part of me. It is a tool that is accessible at all times. And so all I have to do is like take an inhale and then exhale and do some of these techniques to either calm myself down or make myself feel a bit more alive. And I was able to do the next thing. And to me, that enabled me and got me further down the road to feeling more human, to be able to engage in these things that helped me live like a richer fuller life or just to be a person who was in recovery. And that's why I feel passionate about breath work and that if it's useful for anybody who feels like it's hard to get from, you know, one point to the other. Um, so yeah, we have kind of the activating and the calming. And then I was talking about the longer sessions. And that is for another workshop. But one of the techniques that I wanted to introduce to you today that you might already be familiar with, or those of you who have never heard about breath work before is just called the box breath. And it's super fun and super simple because we just paint a box with our breath. And again, it's something that we can take with us, we can do whenever. And you inhale for a count of four, you hold for a count of four. You exhale for a count of four and again, hold for a count of four. So I'm going to demo it here in a minute. And then I actually have a really fun playlist that I put together. That's just like a daily breath work one playlist that Max will share with you all. And you can use that at any point in time if you have Spotify. If not, I encourage you just to find some music that you really love that resonates with you, that maybe has a beat to it. And you can breathe to the, you know, the count of four along with a beat. And you can just have that one song in your pocket with you at any point in time to do this exercise. And that way it can feel really accessible. It's, you know, customized to you or you're super welcome to use my playlist. Um, one thing that I wanted to touch on because I know a lot of folks in recovery and close people to me may still smoke or vape. Or we still might be engaging in things that we feel like inhibit our lung capacity or our breathing. And so we might hold some shame about that, or we might not hold any at all, but we might just be like, I probably can't, you know, do that thing. And that is false. It is not true. Max and I were actually talking the other day that I actually think that a lot of people do smoke and vape because you actually, you are breathing. So even though you're you know, bringing in the substance, you're actually still doing all of that beautiful work with the body that the body craves, those deep breaths. So doing breath work, I think alongside, that is just fine. And so I invite you to do that as well. And if you have any concerns or curiosities about it, you know, reach out to somebody myself or somebody else who's knowledgeable about it. Yeah, I think super important to just always be asking questions, raising our hands if there are things or resources out there that we might think help us. Yeah. So utilize those. Um, all right. So I'm going to demonstrate the box breath here. Um, and then we will do, we will do the playlist together. And I will chat a little bit more and then we'll have some Q and A. So box breath, we are going to just exhale everything out. And you can do this through the mouth or through the nose. And we're going to inhale two, three, four, and you hold two, three, four. Exhale two, three, four, hold two, three, four. Inhale two, three, four, exhale two, three, four. Or sorry, hold and then exhale two, three, four and hold again. So we create that box, we inhale, we hold, we exhale, and then we hold again. So that is what we call the boxed breath. And while I'm here and I'm actually running a little bit ahead of schedule, I'm going to share with you a breath technique that is one of those ones for when you're feeling really lethargic and tired and you need to bring in a bit of energy. And I don't recommend doing this one if you are feeling anxious in the moment because it can be anxiety inducing. Anytime we do kind of an activating breath work, it's going to tap into our nervous system and pull on any residual anxiety that we have and what's going to make us feel a bit more anxious. So this is one that you're going to want to do when you're feeling, yeah, really sleepy, really calm and you need to feel motivated. So it's called the breath of fire. And there are many different variations. This one is rooted in pranayama, which comes from the yogis and eastern practices that they've been doing for thousands and thousands of years. But this one, it's going to be really important to breathe in and out through the belly. So contrary to what a lot of us have been taught to hold our tummies in and hold it really tight. When we breathe, we're going to want to push our bellies out. And then when we inhale, we, yeah, inhale, push the belly out, exhale, we contract. So it's simply just and you just do that at a little bit of a rapid pace and you can feel that it starts to bring heat and energy into the system and it starts to aliven the body and it starts to wake you up. So you can do it as long as you need, as short as you need, but you just so inhale, pushing the belly out and exhaling, pulling, pulling the belly in. And you can do that and stop and rest. Kind of check in, see how you're feeling, how the body is doing. And then you could do it again for a little bit. This is when that you should always do while you're seated, not while you're up walking around or doing anything else. And be, yeah, conscious about it as you do it. All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and play our playlist that we're going to be practicing the box breath with. And there are three songs that are going to be played and it's for a total of seven minutes. Seven minutes is a good amount of time to do kind of a morning or an evening breath work practice. So the first song, I'll invite you just to close your eyes and you sit in what we were talking about with the breath awareness. So just being aware of the breath. And it's important to point out too, that we are not bringing judgment into this space. You are not bringing judgment with you when you go to do this. So we're not going to sit here and like analyze how we're breathing and say, oh, I am this way because of this, or I need to be more this way or that. And it's natural that some of those thoughts might come online and I am not like trying to tell you to beat those thoughts out of you because they're natural, but what we want to do is just like gently let them go. So if you're feeling that judgment come on really hard, just be like, not right now and just come back to the breath. But we just want to be aware of it. Like, how is it landing in the body? How are we feeling? And the cool thing about this is that every time we do this, it's changing, right? Our days, we're changing, our nervous systems are changing and evolving throughout the day. You know, how are we breathing in the morning versus middle of the day, like peak work hours versus at night? So it's just simply witnessing. So we're going to do that for the first song. So it's just, it's almost like a way to get to know yourself and hang out with yourself. Which can be hard. I know that that was really, really hard for me. I didn't know myself for a really, really long time. I'm still trying to figure all of that out, but a breath is a good way to do that. So breath awareness on the first song. Second song, I'm going to guide you through the box breath. So just finding a nice comfortable seat. Sitting, you know, with your chest kind of open and not too rigid or straight. And then the last song, we're just going to sit again and witnessing, witnessing how we're feeling and doing. So find yourself in that comfortable seat. And if you want to, go ahead and bring your eyes to a close. And place your hands where they feel nice and comfortable, nice in your lap. And here we go with the first song.
He said, I think we just need to share audio on your end.
Ah, sorry.
No worries.
Forgot to. All right, cool. Thank you, Max. All right. Here we go again. All right, first song, so we're just sitting here. Maybe for the first time ever, just paying attention to how we're breathing. If not, just coming back to that old friend, the breath. Just witnessing. Here we go. We're gonna start the box breath. Again, it's an inhale of four, we hold for four, exhale for four, and hold for four. All right, so here we go. We're going to inhale. Two, three, I'm trying to get with the beat, sorry y'all. All right, we'll try again. Inhale, three, four, hold, two, three, exhale, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four. Inhale, two, three, four, hold, two, three, four. Exhale, two, three, four, hold. Inhale, hold, exhale, hold. Inhale, hold, exhale, hold. Inhale, hold, exhale, hold. Inhale, hold. Exhale, hold. Inhale, hold. Exhale, hold. Inhale, hold. Exhale. Inhale, hold. Exhale. Inhale. Just keep going. Just a little bit longer. And release that breath work practice. Now just sit. And again, just witnessing how you feel. Remember if that busy mind is coming online, just see it and then come back to the body. So that is a seven minute practice. And I just want to talk to this. If there was anybody who tried to do that, who felt really messy or was like, couldn't get the counting down. And by the way, like my counting was totally off because I'm still super nervous to be here doing this. So I apologize for the wonkiness on my end. But it's funny because our minds will tell us that it's super easy just to do this thing. But sometimes it might take a long time, a year or two, just to be able to take one simple breath where you actually feel really grounded and connected. So I just wanna acknowledge that there's a spectrum of experience and life experience out there that some of us might, you know, step into a practice like this and feel, you know, really experienced and it's easy and these techniques work really well for them. And then there's other people who it might take a really long time, like myself, who at the beginning was like, you know, gasping for breath in the middle of like a work day. And I felt just so disconnected from it. And also just wanna bring back that point where, you know, once I was able to kind of connect and develop a relationship with my breath, it made it so much easier for me to access life and these things in recovery that I needed to do to help myself in like a present and intentional way. I think prior to that, I was experiencing things in this like really chaotic, like really desperate way of like just anything and everything. I just wanted to help. I just wanted help and I wanted to feel better so badly that I was grabbing onto all of these different things and trying them on. And Max knows, like I ran, like anyway, I just was, I ran a marathon, like on the cut, like as I was getting sober because I just was like, I was so in, I couldn't be in my body. So I spent like hours and hours running. And that's fine. I need to own that. That was, that was my thing. But it was finding the breath and connecting and being present with myself. Then I actually started to think, find things that really started to make me feel like I was healing and that I was like more engaged and present with my life. So, mm, thanks all. I'm glad that that was useful and we found value in that. And yeah, I was thinking this morning when I was like so nervous prior to getting on here. I was remembering that I used to get up and speak in front of like hundreds of people with no sleep and really nervous and sweaty and so hungover and all of these things. And if you're still in that, that place, I honor that. But I was just like, if I can do that, you know, I can, I can show up here today and breathe with you all. So yeah, we've talked kind of about breath work as this giant umbrella term. We've talked about the nervous system and how it can be, if we use different breath work techniques, it can be activating. It can help us move out of a place of depression and tired and feeling lethargic and activate or calming, so moving out of anxiety, out of activation and calming ourselves, bringing ourselves back to a place of presence. And if you're asking yourself like, what, what if I do if I'm feeling both of these things? Cause that for sure can be a thing. We can feel so anxious that we feel incapable. We feel so stuck, right? So you're like, what if I'm either or? My invitation to you would be that breath awareness piece and like asking the breath and your body what it needs to get to one or the other and trying both, right? So when we elongate the exhale, that's the most useful breath technique that you can do to calm yourself. So if you are in like an acute moment of stress and you're like ready to pop off and you're feeling super angry or you're feeling really anxious, a long exhale is the way to go. So even doing like a breathing in one and breathing out two, breathing in one and breathing out three. So elongated exhale is always, I shouldn't always say always because we're all different. And, you know, I want you to honor yourself and what your experience might be. But typically for most people, a really long exhale is going to be the key to feeling calm, to feeling more motivated and activated. It's gonna be quicker, shorter breaths. And it's kind of like bringing that heat in, right? So it's not like you're exercising. It's not hyperventilation. It can be if you misuse the breath. But as long as we're having an equal exhale to inhale, we'll stay away from that hyperventilation. That's always a big question with breath work, like isn't that just hyperventilating? And it's not because the oxygen to CO2 ratios are different in the body. But if you're doing equal inhales to exhale at a rapid pace and kind of heating up our physical body, then that can be that motivating, that getting to move piece. So if you are a person who experiences both, you can play a little bit with either one of those and see what helps you to feel better. And when I say see what helps you to feel better, this is asking the body. So breath work is very much a somatic practice. It is connecting with the body. And so I do wanna acknowledge that there are people who don't feel connected to their body or may have had a trauma that keeps them separated from having a relationship with your body. A, using breath work can be a good way to mend that relationship or start to get curious about having a relationship with your body again. But if it's something that you feel uncomfortable with and uncomfortable going, uncomfortable going into the body because of that, I honor that. I honor that. Please, you honor that. And also know that there might be parts of you that are accessible. Like it doesn't need to be an all or nothing. Maybe we just start with connecting with just this precious part is the breath. And then we can develop that healing in relationship with our body as we go. I've been chatting so, so much, Max. Oh, you're muted.
The rookie. You may not recognize me because I've gotten calm after this breath work practice. Thank you so much, Sid. I loved especially the box breath. I forget about it. It is so easy, so accessible, and we talked about this before we started, that it is so connected to music, right? Those four beats that you can literally find those four beats in any song. So it can be anything from punk to like Enya, right? Like whatever works for you. And I love that, the connection between breath work and music. And I know some of those things go really well together for folks. I have some questions for you.
Yeah.
And well, first of all, how often do you practice breath work as a, as a practitioner?
So, um, I think that I try to practice breath awareness several times a day. I don't think it's natural that we're like, you know, walking around being aware of our breath all of the time. So I try to in moments, like if I'm sitting down, I'm getting my workstation ready to work. Like I'll just try to be aware of my breath and like just take a deep breath. So that's something that I'm continuously trying to do. And I have different morning and evening rituals that I'll bring in depending on like the season. But during the winter months, I'm definitely somebody who's affected by like seasonal depression. And so it is useful for me to have a really robust morning practice. And I use one of those activating practices, like I'll even do the Breath of Fire to whatever song like I like. I'll change it up every few weeks, but I'll listen to that. I do just like what I did with the playlist, like I'll do a song to stay calm, like kind of settle into my body. I do the Breath of Fire and then sometimes I'll dance afterwards or sometimes I'll meditate afterwards. But it's really just, yeah.
Both kind of, you know, parts of the, the human experience, right? To activate and to calm. So kind of like breath, Breath of Fire in the morning, like you showed us. And then maybe that box breath is kind of perfect for calming and getting into that salute routine. Perfect. Well, speaking of that playlist, I'm putting it in the chat right now. And I will also take it over to, to our YouTube folks. And this is perfect because this is a playlist ready to go. It's the seven minute breath work practice we did. And I love that because for me, now I have a seven minute routine tomorrow to try. It's ready for me. I'm gonna do, you know, the box breathing for, for calming and all that. And I loved the choice of music that you picked. That was really nice.
And I'll add to, oh, I was just gonna piggyback on that. I was just gonna say, like you had meant, I mentioned, and then you mentioned again, like finding music that you like, right? So it's with you at any point in time. And then also there are tons of resources and YouTube videos and things out there around different techniques. So if it's something that you're resonating with, there's tons of resources out there. And then of course myself as well, but yeah, research it.
Absolutely. Yes, in this video, in case you had to, you know, pop out a little bit early, this video will be on Work It Helps YouTube channel for you to go back and try and do it along with Sid if, if you'd like. So, but there's that playlist in the chat. And gosh, this is one of the biggest questions I know I hear around breath work. And, and this sometimes happens with me. What if breath work actually makes me anxious? What if thinking about my breath makes me anxious? This is a blocker that has been in front of me around breath work for a long time.
Yeah, I love this question because I've had several people along the way come to me with this. And my first kind of answer, which is not one you're gonna like, Max, is that it's working. So as I was saying earlier, like it's a somatic practice. So I am a big believer that we, and this comes from like Peter Levine and a lot of his work, but I'm a believer that we hold stories, we hold experiences in the body. I like to think of them as like stories. So they actually live inside like our fascia, inside of our tissue. So this big, beautiful life that we've lived, like all of these experiences, whether they're like these huge traumas or whether they're like tiny annoyances, they come and they like take hold and they live in the body. So when we start to breathe, that's setting that shit free. It's setting it free. And so I think that if you are someone, yeah, who starts to breathe and you start to feel anxious, like it's working. It means that you're starting to like free yourself of that tension. But also not to be taken lightly because inducing anxiety can be really scary. A lot of us walk around every day feeling anxious all day. So if you like go to do this practice and you're like, this is making me feel worse. Like that's, yeah, that's not something to be taken lightly. So I would really just go back to the breath awareness. Like, can you do one breath without feeling anxious? Like let's start there. Let's try to accomplish the one breath, feeling calm. And then, you know, there's people to work with around it that have, you know, the education and experience to walk you through your breath experience and help you move from anxiety to relieve, releasing and relieving all of that tension to get to a place where you can do an activating breath and start to feel this ecstatic. You know, breath work can, it can create this ecstatic sense of life. It can bring back dormant desires and appetites and things that haven't been available to us that are in recovery. So my wish is for people to move past that anxious point and to be able to like open up those pockets again. And for me, I'm like, oh shit, like I've met my 14 year old self who I haven't been able to hang out with in like 25 years. And I'm like, oh damn, I really loved that thing. And not cerebrally, not like, oh, that girl loved that thing. Like, oh, my body remembers that I love that thing. So, yeah, just to do the one breath, like accomplish that one breath. I mean, that's so how recovery is for us, right?
I mean, I'm, I'm convinced. And I have had such benefits since some of those blockers that I have been able to move through them, but really appreciate that. Alright, some ailments that, that sometimes get in the way of breath work. You know, pelvic floor pain. The question is, any cautions around belly breathing or diaphragm breathing, one versus the other, when it comes to pelvic floor pain? Or any issues around, I guess, sacrum?
Hmm, uh huh. Yeah. Well, so there are definitely counter indications to doing breath work. So if you are somebody who has any kind of like heart conditions, epilepsy, pregnancy, detached retina, and then if there are any, like if you have, I mean, everybody knows their own health best. So if you think that breath work would maybe not be a good match or fit for you, consult your doctor to see. And then again, just start really light and easy. With pertaining to the pelvic floor, I'll just start out by saying like, I don't know specifically. I had somebody in a community come to me and say that she repaired her pelvic floor after having her babies via breath work. And I was like, that is so cool. And need to research, research that a bit more. My recommendation always would be to start slow. Like, don't pop off and think you can do a hundred pushups. Like, don't pop off and think that you can just work your belly muscles to repair. As far as like configuration and specific exercises, I don't know. But you bet your ass, I'm gonna go look it up now. As far as respiratory stuff, one of those other three things that I was talking about why I'm pulled to breath work is because my father passed away from COPD and emphysema from a lifetime of drinking and smoking. So he actually was the first person who talked to me about breath work. And I thought he was bonkers. I was just like, I totally dismissed it. And he was engaging in what's what called the Buteyko method, which is a method where you specifically breathe in and out the mouth. Or sorry, the nose, the nose, the nose, breathe in and then out through the nose. So I know there is a community of people who use the Buteyko method with respiratory stuff. And as I was saying earlier, I don't think it should be a deterrent. I think that you should consult with your, you know, your medical doctor first. But then start slow. Like it honestly is just this relationship of knowing your capacity and what you're, you're able to do. So the good thing about the breath is like, it's right, it's right there. You can just start really gentle. And you find, figure out what practices work for you and don't. And then you take what works.
I really appreciate, you know, bringing up respiratory issues, you know, as, as the world has known, we've been kind of globally constricted in our breathing. We are, you know, on the other end, hopefully of a, you know, a pandemic that affected mainly our lungs. And some folks are still suffering from long-term COVID. Now, is that something that shouldn't keep people away from, from trying breath work and getting more into their breath and seeing what kind of you know, breathing still feels good to them and find improvement from?
My belief is that I mean, we're all breathing anyway. Right? So unless you are really inhibited, I think perhaps like if you're supported by oxygen, like it might not be available to you. But if we can release fear around breathing and like breathe a bit with confidence, whether it just be in breath awareness, right? Not doing any kind of wild techniques or anything like that. That to me is even doing breath work and can be a massive shift. So if it's something you're curious about and you think might benefit you, you know, you can start real simple and I don't, yeah, I think that it's, you know, we're, everybody's breathing anyway. So I think it's available to most.
And then one last question said, anxiety, anxiety, anxiety. It's a, it's big in recovery in the world right now, right? We're all kind of working with different little anxiety monsters. Besides box breath, for those who might want to start looking in, do you have a couple other suggestions for techniques for calming anxiety besides box breath?
Hmm, yeah. The counting is like a go-to, right? So I was saying earlier, like always with the anxiety is the elongated exhale. So using your finger, so for me too, like my mind is always trying to tell me things. So counting is good for me because it makes, it helps my mind to be busy while I'm breathing. So just counting inhale for one, exhale for two. Inhale for one, exhale for three. Inhale for one, exhale four, five, six. And see how long you can go. And honestly, by the time if you can get to 10, you'll feel massively calmer than you were at the beginning. And there's so many out, out there. There's the coherence breath, which is honestly, it's used, like professionals teach it like before doing a speaking event and things like that. And it's counting in for five and like tapping with your fingers and out for five. So simple. It's one, two, three, four, five. And then there's body position and there's environment. So like maybe you find a breath technique that you love and you start to add in something into your environment that helps you to feel better also, right? Like a sensory item. So something that smells good or feels good. A comfy blanket. I like weird socks. Light a candle. You know, take your hair down, have a bath after, do water. Like I said, it's that bridge piece too. So.
I feel like you also just gave me a checklist for tonight. Drink water.
Have a damn bath.
Take a bath, yes. Oh, this is great. What you're describing is yummy self-care and, and you know, what we should be putting in our lives, whatever chance we can. And I just love that, that breath work, you know, is just going to be a part of so many folks' toolkits. And I really encourage folks to again, watch the video over. It'll be live on our YouTube tomorrow. It'll be permanently there on our YouTube tomorrow. The live version is available now. And gosh, Sid, on behalf of myself and all of us here at Work at Health, thank you so much for coming to breathe into the new year with Sid Rhodes. Thank you so much, Sid, and for everyone that came out tonight. And a special thank you to my 2023 ambassadors who helped me promote the event. Thank you. And as always, if it were, let me get this right. It works if you work it. So let's work it together. Boom. Thank you so much, Sid.
Beautiful. Thank you, Max. Thank you, Work at Community. Thank you all.
Alright, see y'all soon. Bye.